Hello, everyone. Happy Monday evening. Thank you for joining us. We're ready to start our regularly scheduled part of our meeting today. And as usual, we're going to start with the Pledge Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave, the meeting has not been called to order.
Okay, I'm calling it to order.
Thank you.
Believe that did that, but okay. We'll start with the hearing and privilege of the floor and as usual, in this remote session, we will not be able to take questions. We did receive a question later this afternoon, a set of questions. And, and thank you for sending those in. I had asked Superintendent, who I didn't get this forwarded to in a lot of time, so bear with us with the answers. We're going to answer what we can and whatever we don't have answers to, we will supply, but with that, I'll move to our superintendent's comments. Susan?
Thank you, Dave. So let me start by saying that as folks might most likely are aware, we did begin basketball cheerleading, boys and girls basketball, University and varsity, cheerleading and ice hockey this past week and have had three basketball matchups, boys and girls, played hockey for the first time Friday night. And I believe that the cheer competitions are going to be done virtually with cheer teams submitting videos, but I want to double check that. However, I do believe at this point that the the general consensus is they would not bring all of the teams together. Teams would compete remotely. On my call with the Health Department today and the other school districts, preschools and county providers, the question of when we might start having fine arts performances came up again. There is quite a ground swell, as you might imagine, in across the state right now from parents of children whose strengths lie with fine arts or in drama and the arts and would like their children to have similar opportunities as what we're now seeing in athletics. Nothing is out yet, nothing firm, but I certainly would expect that that will come at some point in the not-too-distant future. We also heard today that Schenectady County has been able to get their vaccine doses despite last week's weather. That's good news for us, and I certainly know that school district employees who submitted their names are being called and set up for their vaccination appointments. So we are happy about that. As we return to school today from the week winter break, we had two students, one middle school, one high school student have tested positive. That occurred right as we went out on break, so no contact tracing. And then I was informed after the survey closed today that we also have two elementary students who have tested positive. I'll report them tomorrow. Once the system closes for the day, you can't go back in and update it. So I'll report those two students in tomorrow's count, but as with the two students I reported today, there won't be any follow-up contact tracing involving the school district because the infections occurred early on in the break. At this time, as of yesterday, the infection rate in the county was 3.1%. Our seven-day rolling average again in the county is 2.3%, so things are moving very nicely in that regard. And I am going to address to the best I can, Dave's right, I just saw the email, the question that were raised about fall sports, which will begin in March. We have to go through the exact same process that we did for the sports that we offered now. So Jamie and his team are working on the protocols. They will be reviewed by the district's physicians. The board will have to approve by resolution any sports that we are going to play. Mr. Dopp, who is the NISFA director, has been polling districts to see who might be doing which sports so that they can begin to build a schedule. So although they're saying March 1st was the date, that's not what I'd call a fast and hard date at this point as folks gear up to do those additional things that have to be done and they try to put a schedule together. As the board is probably aware, the teams we're playing right now are not part of foothills. We're playing Miss Geona, Mahonason, Burn Hill, Shellmont. No schools that we would typically play. Instead, playing within the county. Where frankly, we can keep kids close to home, have earlier matchups, some of the other things that allow us to continue to keep our buildings clean and then disinfected before school reopens the next morning. Also on our call today, we talked about the possibility of the CDC reducing the six-foot and mask guidelines for schools to three-foot and masked. That would be a real game changer. It would basically mean we could bring all our kids back. However, once again, there's a lot of rumor out there, but it doesn't seem to have a real feed at this point. And I would remind you that we are so far ahead of many other states, for example, California, which haven't brought their kids back at all, that when people are talking about bringing kids back to school, they're really talking about it from a standpoint of kids who have not been in school for months and months. New York has actually done a great job with this and brought our kids back and done so safely. So we will keep you informed on all of these matters as we move forward. And Dave, if anyone has any questions about anything I just said, I'm happy to answer them.
And just, Susan, just to, to let Ms. Woods know that we will answer, we'll try to get answers to the rest of her questions as soon as we possibly can.
Absolutely. Within that process, Dave.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Superintendent?
Yes, I just got my charting report in the mail today. And the big thing on the front is that we're, that we're not doing any sports. And I just think people should know this was probably put to press before we made our decision so that, you know, we're not crazy, but they were trying to put out a time we report and things change between the time that's meant to press and we receive them in the mail.
That's exactly what happened, Hammond had already gone to press.
Thanks. Okay. Next, we will begin our task, which is to start our budget discussion for the 2022 budget. And with that, we're going to go through a presentation on the carry-forward budget. So I will turn it over to Susan and Drew.
Yes, we're going to do things a little bit differently this year. I'm going to take the first part of the presentation and then Drew is going to jump in and do a bit of it with me and then I will come back and wrap us up. So this is our first look at the carry-forward budget. Karen, next slide. And I have three things I hope to accomplish with you tonight. And this is very typical for those of you who've been through budget with me before. I want you to understand the carry-forward budget and what's in it. I want you to be aware of where we are in terms of our tax levy limit, that computed tax levy limit and how it applies to our budget. And I want you to understand what I'm looking at as we begin to work on budget together, understanding that Drew's been working on budget since July 1st and I've been pretty close behind him. So it's not that we wait till now to start working. The work is well underway. Karen, next slide. Our Scotia Glenville mission statement, I'm not going to read to you. I'm going to ask you just to take a couple moments, take a look at that and remember that this is what sets the stage for where we're trying to go as a school district. Thank you, Karen. Next slide. Now, we set board goals, but the district also has strategic goals that have been developed and have actually been in place for since I came. I can attest to that since 2005. And I think about those goals in terms of these four major umbrellas, but I would also tell you that they certainly overlap with one another. And those are instruction, operation, facilities and personnel. I wanted to bring these up tonight because I'd like to remind folks that this year, actually since March of 2020, has presented incredible challenges for us as a school district in all four of these areas. Although I would say that our core mission, our core strategic goals have not changed, the way we are delivering, developing, implementing in all of these areas has undergone significant change in the past 11 months, soon to be 12. So we have seen significant changes in terms of instructional delivery, but also in terms of content. In terms of operations, where we have had to revamp much of what we do in terms of our strategies for keeping our facilities safe and open. In our facilities themselves, where we've had to make dramatic changes in terms of what we're using parts of our facilities for, how we're maximizing the ability to keep students physically separate, how we are making certain that facilities are cleaned and disinfected each day, that we're purging the air. And certainly in terms of personnel, both when I look at how our personnel are delivering instruction, but also how our bus drivers are transporting our students, how chart wells are feeding our students, both those here and those at home, the meals that we're providing to families who are facing food insecurity, the changes that have been made under family medical leave and also COVID leave, and then the changes that have been made again to COVID leave, what we call FICRA. So all of these things have really taken on a new life throughout this pandemic. And I mention that because I don't know where we're going to be as we roll into September of 2021. Frankly, as we roll into July 1st of 2021. And I think about last summer and when we finally got word that we could reopen and what the strategies we were going to have to put in place were going to look like and the lift that that took. So although we have gotten time under our heels and have many plans in place, are doing fine work, have staff who have committed themselves and work hard every day on behalf of our children. I do want to emphasize that there are going to be several things as we talk throughout budget that we just are not going to know the answers to. I don't know if we will be fully back in September. I don't know if the expectation will be, even if students can return, that we still offer a fully virtual option. I don't know what's going to happen with the New York State assessments, with the regions, with all of those things that have traditionally been part and parcel of a high school education. At this point, we still don't know and won't know for a bit, although we are planning about things like prom and graduation and many of those events that we missed last spring. Because again, we can't gather in large groups. We can gather in sort of larger groups than we could last spring, but there are so many unanswered questions. So when I think about these strategic goals in the areas of instruction, operation, facilities and personnel, I just want to be clear with you that we don't have all the answers. And that is, we have always done in our district, we will make the best decisions we can, given the information we have at the time we have to make the decision. And that things may change. We certainly were not thinking, I certainly wasn't thinking, as we held graduation at our high school in a drive-through manner in June, that we were coming back to school and school was going to look like it did in September. That happened in about eight weeks. So again, I just want us to be cautious, to be thoughtful and to understand that we will do the best that we can, given the information that we have. Karen, next slide. Thank you. These are still my guiding questions. They were my guiding questions when I interviewed here before I came in 2005. They're still my guiding questions. I think about them differently now, certainly some of them more globally than I did when I first came and as our experiences have changed, both as a community and certainly through the last year. But these are still the questions I ask myself. And I would tell you that right now for schools across New York State, that last question about what we're going to do when we're not being successful with students is on all of our minds. As has been the case in many places, was certainly the case for us last spring. Students and staff started out with much more enthusiasm early on in those first weeks out of school, and we're seeing that again. So students got off to a strong start in the fall. We were very gung-ho, very excited about what we thought we could offer our children. And now we, as our many schools in the area, are experiencing higher-than-normal failure rates. Students who are not engaged with us, children who are having the kinds of stress that we would typically have them seeing counselors for, that they might even be in counseling outside of school. We're trying to shore that up in some long-distance relationships. So all of those additional challenges that this remote environment has brought to us. And while I am grateful every day that we have our K through five students in, except for those whose families have chosen fully virtual. And I am grateful that our middle school and high school students at least get in sometimes. I would not tell you that this is ideal for anybody. I truly do not believe that. So we have got to do some thinking about when and if we bring our kids back more rigorously, more regularly than we are now. What are we going to do to start building towards that success? Karen, could you go to the next slide? At this time, I'm going to turn things to Mr. G. Quinto and let him talk you through the next few slides for you.
Yeah, I'm good. Good evening. The carry-forward budget, which is basically the plan, the expenditures that would be necessary to continue the programs and staffing levels of the current budget year into the next budget year. So what that displays on this slide is a 2% increase. So you're going to be spending $59,327,000, which the 2% is in line with our historical expenditure increase over the past 10 to 12 budget years. So we continue to maintain a very conservative and a slow-growing budget. But the issue this year is going to be on the revenue side as, as we talked about last budget or board meeting. There's zero increase in state aid and there's a .13 maximum allowable tax cap. So that's, that's the issue that's going to face the superintendent and the board as we move forward. Karen, can you go to the next slide? The next slide displays the funding, the revenue sources of the 2122 budget in comparison to the prior-year budget. And what you can see there is we're going to use the same amount of fund balance and debt service reserve as the prior year, which is approximately 7% of our budget. But you can see some significant decreases in interest income. We're getting basically 1/10th of a percent, or a year ago, we're getting 2%. So it's a significant drop there. And you can see that the pilots are up significantly. The state aid is flat and the property taxes are increasing by 2.66%. That would be the levy increase that would be necessary to balance the budget if the board went with a 2% spending increase. Karen, next slide. And then you can see in the next slide, the main components of how we're going to spend the money. And basically, the biggest increase there is in staffing and in benefits. Although staff instruction is a 2% increase and benefits is a, is a 2.54, pretty marginal increases, given how those numbers typically increase. But we benefit from 11 retirements and also from a 0% rate increase on our health insurance due to the pandemic. There was very little, if any elective surgery during the majority of 2020, 21. So the carriers did not, they gave us a very slight rate increase. So we're going to benefit from that next year on the health insurance line. I don't expect to see that again in 22, 23. So basically, there's your components of your expenditures. So Karen, can you go to the next slide? As you know, on the last board meeting, we went over the tax cap limit. The growth factor is 1.23% Consumer Price Index. As I displayed and it's in your, your packet, you can see the mitigating factor to that. Our capital exclusion has an adverse effect this year. That's basically the debt that we have on our books with the building aid compared to the prior year. And in 2122, we have more debt coming out off the books than building aids. What has an adverse effect? And our pilots increased. That has an adverse effect on it. And that's in the chart that we attached to your packet. So the .13 maximum allowable tax cap means that we can only increase the oh, next slide. Yeah, go to the next slide, Karen. I'm sorry, I was talking to the next slide. But that, the maximum exclusion allows for about $41,000 in tax levy growth to stay at the 50% simple majority. The 2.66 that would be needed to raise taxes would create a $785,000, almost $786,000 gap, which would require us to get a 60% majority to override the tax cap. Next slide, Karen. Susan will wrap this up now.
So one of the things I would like the board to consider, to start thinking about, is your potential willingness to go over our tax levy limit, that .13. I'm not suggesting that we try and fund the entire 800,000 additional that we need, but that perhaps we talk about a reduction of half of that amount, which I believe we could get to pretty painlessly. And then going out over the tax levy limit. And you know, we're going to ask you to commit to that one way or the other, that you would be willing to go out over or that you wouldn't, but you also know that though we must report that to the state by March 1st. Am I correct, Drew?
Yes.
We can change our minds. But .13 is not going to give us any room to move and $800,000 worth of cuts would have a significant effect on programs here. So what I'm hoping you will consider is a sweet spot in between. So I want to talk about some of these things in terms of what I'm doing for our strategy and how we're working with folks. Drew and I are meeting and Karen, she's available with each of the members of the administrative team this week to talk about what people's needs might be in the coming year. And you know, my strategy has typically been a give-to-get. You want something else, you're going to have to give up something to get it. I say this often and I mean it with love in my heart, but in education, we just like to keep adding things on. And frankly, we cannot do that. We can't just keep adding things on. That, that does not work. We also have to recognize that any financial relief the district receives in the terms of the federal stimulus monies will be one-time dollars. And we saw this in 2008 at the recession, when it was looking very, very grim. And then the era monies came through. That was under President Obama, the American Relief and Something Act. Thank you, Drew. Recovery Act, which kept us heads above water for the next couple of years. And then, as Drew's historical data has shown, resulted in several layoffs, several rounds of layoffs, personnel reductions. You might recall, no late buses, no field trips. There were all kinds of things that we have worked very hard to bring back since that time. But as much as people want to be excited, if you will, about the potential for federal stimulus money, that's not ongoing money. That will be one-time money. And we've got to be very careful about what we do with what we get because you don't want to start adding things that you then can't sustain once that money goes away. And again, board members who've worked with me for a while know that we are very cognizant of that here and that we have tried very hard to make sure we don't add things that we end up then taking away shortly after we add them because the money no longer exists to support them. We will always begin with our mandates in mind. There are certain things that are required of the New York State Public School Education. We don't get to decide whether we like them or don't like them, or think they're the right things or the wrong things. They are the mandates and we will follow those mandates. As I mentioned to you earlier, I've got to keep those strategic goals in place because I don't know which of the several things that we've had to fund this year to the tune of close to a quarter of a million dollars, Drew, in COVID monies. Almost half a million dollars in COVID money. So the additional cleaners, the additional cleaning, the certified nursing assistants, the app to report your health in the morning, the multiple bus runs, the addition of a bus run, the physical distancing. I don't know which of those things we might have to carry forward with. We certainly learned a valuable lesson this year about our need for technology that we can put into the hands of every student. So you have seen a bump in my technology budget. There are costs we did not anticipate. We had to buy more bandwidth. We didn't realize we were going to need that. We needed hotspots. We need subscriptions for the internet. So all of these things that we have managed this year and done a good job managing, I want to commend my team. But I don't know which of those things are still going to be on the table next year for 2122. And we've got to be cognizant about that. We have seen quite a dip in enrollment. And although it is early in terms of incoming kindergarteners, one of the things that I have always looked at, but will look at much more closely this year, is our enrollment. And what that means, although we have 11 retirements, it is possible we won't need to refill them all. I would prefer doing that to down the road, having to lay people off. So I'm going to try to be very pragmatic, very reserved as I look at current enrollment figures, as I look at kindergarteners coming in, new to district. As we wait to hear whether or not a fully virtual option will be required next year. as we wait to hear whether or not a fully virtual option will be required next year. And frankly, I think it will. I think we will be required to continue to provide a fully virtual instruction. But I'm waiting to hear what those things will mean because all of them have budgetary impacts. Some of the things that we've noticed this year, and we're certainly not the only school district. You know that Karen and I and Drew have all been working with our counterparts throughout the region since last March and various ways to support one another through the overarching leadership of Cap Region BOCs. And some of the things that people might have thought at one point in time, we just could not do. We're figuring out we can do that there are ways to make things happen. There are ways to share courses and teachers, perhaps even beyond the distance learning network. And we will continue to look for those opportunities. I don't know what 2122 will look like, and we probably won't know till late in the spring. I think we have to be prepared to accept that nothing is sacred. So if we get to the point where reductions are recommended and have to be made, we're going to have to look at that in a sense of the children impacted. And if you will, the what and the number of children that certain things we do can support. So there might be something I like very much that I would keep. But if push comes to shove and I have to let that go to hang on to something else, I've got to be prepared to know that my favorite thing doesn't get to stay just because it's my favorite thing. And be realistic about that. And of course, I say this and I mean it in the best possible way. We have collective bargaining agreements and we will maintain the integrity of those agreements. We made agreements. We stick with our agreements. That's what we do. Next slide. And so at this point, I would open it up for the board's comments or questions. Really, tonight, I'm just looking for a little bit of feedback from you. If you have it about what you've heard this evening and certainly the wealth of information that Drew provided you in the packet. Dave, I'll turn it back over to you. But Dave, you're muted.
There we are. I'm unmuted. So why don't we go around? And I'll just call on folks if they want to ask a question. Our goal today is to really try to get to the the main question about what we're going to do in relationship to the tax levy. We are going to have many more meetings that deal with program, deal with the financial numbers and all of that. Obviously, if you have a question specific to that stuff, we should definitely address it and answer it. But that's our primary hope for tonight. So why don't we go around?
Susan, I want to start with one, which I normally wait till the end, but I want to start with one today to kick it off. So the money that's in the COVID stimulus package is specifically identified to help schools restart. So, and you may not have the answer to this, but it really does matter from a budgeting perspective. Would that money be on top of our budget and then we would be able to? Or maybe I'm asking to that we we hope that this is what it is, that we'd be able to use that money to do what we need to do to open our schools? That would not be like part of our curriculum costs or instruction costs or that it would really have to do with putting in place the necessary maybe physical structures or cleaning pieces to try to open our schools? Is that how you thought of that money? Or am I way off in hoping that?
Dave, right now, the, as you know, the stimulus that we're recognizing is what was approved from the Donald Trump stimulus package. So that's in the budget that and that's Governor Cuomo was using that to basically offset. He's taking it back to offset what he was going to give. So we came out neutral on that. What they're discussing now, and as you know, hasn't become law yet, is what you're alluding to. So we don't know those those guidelines yet. It could be what you're alluding to. We could use it to assist us in reopening school or covering the costs that go with that PPE and so forth. But as Susan alludes to, until we know, we have to act on the information that we have right now, which is the December stimulus money is reflected in your state aid projections.
Okay, that's why I brought it up kind of Drew, because my worry is, and this is what happened with the recovery money back a few years ago, is that that money, we use that money to build it into being able to reduce our tax levy, for the lack of a better way of saying it. And when that money dried up, then we were stuck in a hole where we were not able to to generate the same amount of revenue because we had kept our tax levy so low by using that money for everyday expenses.
Correct. The the Susan alluded to in 08 was the recession of the almost like a depression. And the era money bought us like three, three to four years of budget stability. And then in 201415, we hit the cliff. We hit the the apex of 45 layoffs and then we and then we had the 1.27 tax cap. And we ended up going out with a 1.76. It was the only time in Scotia's history that we overrode the tax cap. First time we ever asked the public to do that. So it's exactly what you're alluding to, Dave. You could be facing the same thing when you get the prop up money this time.
Okay, thanks. So I'm going to go just, I'm going to go by the list here and folks have questions. Ask away. Dan, did you have anything you wanted to ask?
Thanks, Dave. Just real quick, Drew. Another way it works with a contingency budget, right? That if we, if the if the vote goes down twice, right? We would fall back in a contingency budget. How much are we actually risking this time by doing that? Like, what would be, let's say we stayed at the tax cap versus went over and failed. I think the difference is only like $40,000, correct?
Correct. 41,000 rounded because it's the tax, the tax contingent budget is a zero, zero dollar growth in the tax levy from the prior year. So you cannot raise taxes more than another dollar for the prior year. So we're already basically there at a point, unfortunately.
Yeah. So there's very little risk involved in very little financial risk in going out over the cap ethic.
Correct.
I would agree. You could look at it that way, Dan.
That's a good question, Dan. Dane Jevmore, was that it?
No, I'll see the floor to the next person.
Next on the list here is Hal.
Dan, that's a great question, bud. And then the only thing that I had Susan drew, do you have an idea of what you're you're thinking? You'd like the the percentage to go to for us to consider?
I would say one point something and the something should probably be under 0.5. But Drew and I have really had no conversation about that. So I don't know what he is thinking. He could have a different number in his head.
So statistically, the number that I've mentioned to Susan is that that if you cut the cut the 800,000 and half to 400,000, you'd probably be like a 1.5 levy. One point is $310,000, basically. So we've kind of bantered that out on just some rough numbers without drawing how we're going to get to it. Does that help Hal? Kind of what we would be looking at if we cut that 800 and a half?
Yes, sir.
Maybe at a 1.5, 1.5?
Yeah, and Hal, I know you know this, but we're not locking into a number tonight.
Yeah, no, I get it.
No, I understand you knew that. I just wanted to make sure we clarified.
Curious what the wheels were turning at. So that's all.
Yep. Pam?
Yeah. Do you know what our average tax percentage that we've gone out at over the last like five or 10 years is?
Yes.
I got that.
Right around two.
And we've had two tax decreases in the last, I think, six years. We provide that chart like Susan's as a next round of this. Once you get into her her budget, we have more statistical historical for you. And as you know, I gave you a lot tonight, so I didn't want to give you all that. But basically, Pam, we had two tax crease decreases in the last 10 years. So as Susan's alluding that we're usually around 2% lower.
Hey, I'm looking at last year's and that's what it looks like around the chart from last year. It looks like it was around two over the previous six or seven years.
Okay. Thank you.
Rick?
Thanks, Dave. So with most organizations this year with so many unknowns and kind of being thrown for the for a loop over the last year, it's very hard right now to make a good sound decision without. So I guess really the question is, are we willing now to just comply with the state by March 1st to know whether we're willing to go over? And so I would be for going over. I just know that there's a lot of discussion that has to happen. I mean, being willing to say we are willing to go over, not so much that we really want to. So, you know, there's a lot of work still that needs to be done. And moreover, there's a lot of information that we need. I'm really excited to hear about working with neighboring school districts and definitely with that virtual option and cap region. So that's, that's great. You know, don't want to affect the kids with reductions. But at the same time, hoping that the community would rally similar to what they did in 2000, 2007, 2008. And understand that this is a unique year where we need to shore up some differences. That's all I have. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Dave? Dave, are you muted or am I not hearing you? Okay, is anybody else hearing Dave or is it me?
No, I don't hear him either.
Okay. Dave, you're muted, I think. No, nothing to say? Great. Okay. So I think.
How about Pam?
Pam, Pam's already gone. I don't see Kim. Is Kim finally get on or not yet?
Kim had to leave.
Okay, yeah, I know she had a meeting. She said she was going to try to come back. Okay, so basically, in front of us tonight then would be, and I want to make sure we word this exactly correctly here. We would, we would be willing to explore going forward with a tax levy above the limit, which means that from a state perspective to just to give them the report, are we willing to to say yes, we would be willing to go above that limit? That doesn't, number one, doesn't lock us in. Number two, doesn't lock us any number. Number three, recognizing that we need a lot, lot more information. And we obviously get that during the budget session before we would be willing to lock in any number or definite commitment to that. But I we recognize that this is something we have to do every year, even though those who have done it before recognize that we're not sure when we're going to do it by March 1st. So I'm going to go around with a just individual question. Are you, are you willing to report to the state that we would we're willing to to go above the the tax levy? And with those stipulations, that we're not committing ourselves, we're not. You know, we're not locking into a number when so.
Correct, Dave. You can rescind this decision.
Right. So let's, let's go through. I'm going to go right down the list. For some reason, my list is changed. If you can give me a thumbs up or down. Dan?
Yes. Did you say Dan or Pam?
I said Dan.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That's what I would vote yes.
Okay, Pam?
I think we're going to have to go over looking at the circumstances.
Okay, two yes. Dave? Yes. Okay.
You're muted, Dave.
Rick?
Yes, yes.
David's a yes. So it looks like Susan, that that's the direction we'll give to the state. Look forward to to the next part of this, which is really a more in-depth look, obviously, at where we're going to get to and what we got to get to. But I think you got the answer from the board at this point. Their willingness to to explore that option if necessary to keep our program in place, programs in place.
Thank you. And the other thing I would just ask the board to do in preparation for the next meeting is to think about as individuals, as representatives of our community, those things that you would prioritize over other things. And everybody's list is going to be a little bit different. I know that, including my list, including my team's lists. But you need to be thinking about if this, then what for me? So that you can give me a little feedback next week as we begin to really do that deeper dive. Thank you.
Thanks. And so next week, what I tend to do is we'll go around again like this and those ideas that you have that are really important to you. You know, we want to hear them. And you know, when it comes time to trying to figure out how we're going to fit them in, that's when we got to have this discussion about what we would have to give up if that's something to get to get it. So thanks, everybody. That's a great discussion, great questions, and really appreciate it. This is a interesting time. Next is the the actual resolution. Can I get a? Someone to read the resolution, please? Number six. Anyone?
Sure. I resolved that we increase the maximum income level for partial exemption from real property taxes to certain persons, 65 age or older pursuant to Section 467 of real tax law.
Thank you. Is there any questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 One more voice? Aye. I think that's the quorum.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I got you. Okay, next is resolution number or number seven, resolution for a gift donation?
I'll move the Board of Education approve the resolution regarding accepting and appropriating the gift and donation from the Scotia Benville Education Foundation for use at the middle school.
Thanks, Pam. Can I get a second? Thank you. Any questions on this? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? So moved. Number eight?
I'll motion to approve the memorandum of agreement by and between Scotia Glenville Central School District and Scotia Glenville's Administrators Association. Regarding time span, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Can I get a second? Any questions about this? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Thank you. So moved. Next is communications.
I'll move communications, A through C, staffing, one through eight, and the placement of students with disabilities as submitted.
Thank you. Any questions on these?
All second.
Thanks.
Any questions? No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next, oh, just a reminder, folks, to destroy your placements of children with disabilities, please. Thank you. Your placement of children's with disability reports. Next, the internal claims, auditors, reports, warrants, and exceptions. I'll go through these individually. Payroll warrant number 21. Payroll, payroll warrant number 22. And check warrant A27. Any questions? No questions? Thank you, Drew. Other business? Anyone have any other business they would like to discuss?
I just have a question. I know, Susan, you mentioned a little while ago, you brought up anyway about graduation, and I know it's really not that far away. And I know as we are moving forward and our rates keep dropping, and our, our governor now has decided to open things up and let people live a little bit. You know, has there been talk of the graduation? Is there a committee? What kind of work is being done to prepare for, you know, our class of 2021, who has had a very different year?
Yes, they have. Danielle Sawyer and her team, who oversee the graduation ceremony, put things together, work with our class advisors, are working on those items that we would typically work on at this time of year. So those include things like ordering announcements, graduation gowns, that type of thing. Proctors has not determined as of this moment whether or not they are going to open for graduations, and if so, it will depend in part on what the current large gathering is. Percentages that you can bring into a space. I would tell you in my hopeful dreams, I am hopeful that we can have a graduation at Proctors with two guests per student. And that, that's where I'm hanging my hat right now. Hopefully so. But of course, we are also looking at, if not Proctors, then most likely looking at something similar to last year with the drive-through, which we got all kinds of positive feedback on. The prom planning group is planning. They're, they're talking prom, and the class advisors are there. I've met with Peter. So we are looking at, hoping that not only do the rates continue to be stable or dropping, but that the number of people who can be in a venue, the percent, I should say, percentage of people who can be in a venue based on capacity continues to increase. Does that help, Hal?
It does. Thank you. And I know the, as a parent of a senior, Ms. Sawyer's emails are awesome. So they're, they're good. They're keeping us informed. As you're getting closer, it starts to come up. There's a lot of questions about graduation, so that's why I wanted to ask, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Hal. Any other questions? Okay, I have another business. I had been asked to, I don't know what you would call it, coordinate a meeting of citizens in Scotia dealing with the police department. The governor had sent a directive that they had to work on a plan for community involvement and, and reflection that reflects the community makeup and what they're doing to ensure that they're meeting the needs of the community. How I got that? I'm not sure. But nonetheless, one of the things that came up, and I will say I was suggested it, there, we're going to be doing a police survey. A survey about the police department. And, you know, as surveys go, it's very difficult to get people to, to participate in surveys. So one of the recommendations that came from a number of us from the school area was the potential, and Susan, I don't know if this is possible, and just, I don't want an answer from it, just we can mull this over for a later discussion, was if it's possible that we just put a little blurb in our tartan report that, hey, folks, if you're living in Scotia, here's the link to, to a police survey and about community involvement, and if you live in Glenville, here's the link to their survey. They'd asked if we could possibly do that so that they can get the greatest amount of exposure in things to that survey. So if we want to think about it, it's a group, whether it's legitimate to do or not do, I I think I don't see anything wrong with it, but maybe at the next meeting, we could have a discussion about it if folks are okay with it.
And Dave, I'm, along with Ken Handen and Matt Morgan, are serving on Glenville's team.
Yes.
So certainly, I would be more than happy to check in with our attorneys tomorrow and see if there's any reason why we can't put those links on our website under parent resources.
Great.
Yep. So if we, if we can, would there be anybody who would object who are doing that? I'm going to take that as a no objection. So Dave, if I can get that done, if the attorneys tell me there's no problem with putting that in the parent section of our website, we'll be happy to do both. I'll just have someone give me this village of Scotia link.
Yeah, I think Dan is working with the sheriff.
Okay, great.
On trying to coordinate. There's going to be two separate surveys since the issues are different, but
Yes.
But the report all has to be in by April 1st, I believe it is anyway, so.
Yes.
It would be sometime around after that that they would release this, so. I, I'm, I know this wasn't in our report this time, but I'm curious if anyone has heard, if the PTA has been meeting. I've been asked by a couple of parents around that, so I wanted to bring that up as other business. Does anyone know?
I could tell you in one moment. I believe I got an email regarding that if you, if you have a quick second.
Junior High has been having virtual meetings because I've been getting the information about when they're holding their virtual meetings, but they're the only ones I know about.
Thanks, Pam.
Dave, I can share with you that on the Google Calendar, on the district webpage, the list of PTA meetings for the year was posted. I'm not sure if it says the link for where to meet virtually, but I do know that the dates and times are listed as they were submitted to Bob Hanlon. So that's a place to start.
Okay. I don't know if it found what he was looking for.
Yeah, Glenn Warden is, PTA is doing a virtual science fair. That's, that's what came across that I thought they must be meeting around that, I would guess. Yep.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, so I'll let them know that there are things happening. I'm not exactly, they didn't exactly tell me why they were asking, so. Didn't say what school they were, they were interested in, but I said I would ask if anything was happening, so glad to hear that. Thanks for, everybody for sharing that. Is there any other new business? If not, I will ask for, and remind folks that the hearing and privilege of the floor, because there's, when remote, we won't have the final hearing privilege of the floor, but again, send your questions to the administration and board, and we will try to get you answers as promptly as possible. Is there any, yes?
If I could just remind people, we actually have a spot on our website for folks to submit questions at any time.
Oh, good. That's right.
So that would be an excellent place for folks with questions about tonight's meeting or anything else. Submit their questions.
Thank you. It becomes very active around budget time, as I remember. Do we have a need to go into exec session?
I do not, but if folks have something that they're interested in discussing in that forum, I certainly can. But I have nothing.
Okay. Anyone on the board? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Rick. Can I get a second? All in favor of adjourned? Anyone opposed to adjourn? Anyone abstaining from adjourn? So adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a great week.